Good morning, everyone. Chris, brisk, cool morning. We welcome you all here. This is the regular meeting of the Taus County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. It's a little after nine, and we'll call this meeting a quarter. Chris Colwell.
Chairman Tamra.
President.
Vice Chair Gallegos.
President.
Commissioner O'Meara.
President.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
President.
Ms. O'Donnell.
President.
And, of course, so if anyone would please stand, I invite Ms. O'Donnell to introduce her guest today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have the Taus community chorus, the Troubadours. And with us, if you would like to come up where you're going to sing, we have Mark Johnson, who's the director, Debbie Brannan, David Schulz, Roxanne Preston, Mike Hatley, Jim London, Marilyn Newman, and Bob Cronkard.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Mark Jackson, and we are the Troubadours, and we've been singing all over Taus for the last couple of weeks, but we are going to sing a couple of songs for you right now. One, two, three, sing. Page 28. You can join us. Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, o'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits right. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleigh song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Thank you very much. These are made standing, and I ask Chairman Colwell to use this to make a pledge.
Pledge from here, sir.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Probably not a better way to start out a meeting than all the Christmas carols. Thanks very much. Bob? You didn't ask me to laugh at you. That tells me you didn't really want me to be there.
I'm looking good, Bob.
Next item, Commissioners, is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Chris Colwell.
Commissioner O'Meara.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gallegos.
Yes.
Chairman Tamra.
Yes. Next item, under awards and recognition, we had planned to present our retiring HR Director, Ms. Rene Medina, with a retirement certificate. All the Commissioners have signed it. It's a real nice certificate. She's not with us today, but we'll make sure that we get this to her, and we wish her the best in her retirement years. Item seven is citizens' concerns. We ask that if any citizen wishes to address the Commission on any matter, we can take action on it, but we would like to hear it from you. And in accordance with our exact Resolution, you would be limited to five minutes or less. The first request, we had numerous students here that wanted to speak regarding the climate change resolution that we'll be hearing later. If they would please come forward, because they've got some...
Mr. Chairman, Dave couldn't make it, but I told the group, and I don't... There will be some discussion from them, but it'll be under the citizens'...
Are they going to stay? Or no, no, don't do it?
No, no, these people, I don't know. They're here for other things, but I think some of them are leaving in the climate change.
Oh, okay.
I'd be interested in just a moment on the climate change.
Thank you. Come forward. State your name.
Angie Fernandez. Thank you, Chair Commissioners. I just wanted to take a moment to share, express my gratitude to Commissioner O'Donnell for her commitment to working on climate change and sustainability for our community. I've worked with Candace O'Donnell on several issues, trying to reduce waste and whatnot. So I just really want to thank her for bringing this topic up and for her commitment and time, and also for her personal commitment as not only does she, is she as a leader, expressing the need to change as a community, but I see it in her own lifestyle as I have seen her bringing her own container to public events to reduce waste. So I just want to thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for living like you love the planet and helping us make change. And I also want to express that I am willing to support in any way I can. I am an impact reduction specialist. I can help reduce our planetary impact even for the county of Taus. I would be interested in volunteering some time to do an assessment. You know, it's... The one thing about environmental awareness is we can also reduce our budget when it comes to doing daily business. And so I just wanted to express my support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Reverend?
Hello. Good morning. I visited this room before a free time. Then I talked to City Council, to human, astridol, the earth, water, fire, air, the global community. Very important, no, the only human being can resolve this five elements. This relationship, not only human being, other species and animal, and no can come here, suffering, this five elements. That's why I pray, the ancient prayer, that coming here to this globe is only a husband order. Very important period coming. Right now, you see the stock market. All the investment, northern New Mexico, southern Colorado, the oil company, and by the land, that want the mother, brother, the suck. But last time, I may have met, but I talked to what's happening in the deep well, that look like an example, Navafo Run, the relocation area, and Hopi Run, the four-corner area, and power plant, Ralasaki Moara, that all living people suffering, sheep, cow, and human being. Then the well is deep on the deep. Now the second, fast well, second line, water line, is all empty. Now the more deep have to drill. What happens? Ibo Run, the Niata Profection, the oil, sucking oil, the land fell down. There are all kind of reaction coming, human creation. That not only here, I'm 1995. I visit, walk across the peace march, the UN. Please resolve earth, water, fire, air, the global community. Only human being resolve. The future problem coming. Very important to this five elements. That's why I pray deeply, while all oil company attacking New Mexico, the Colorado area. This is a very important area. That's why I pray for, yeah, that preparation. That I try to work out the generation forum bring to New Mexico. Now walking to Santa Fe area, the governor, to working for the global peace forum. All over the world, people fighting for the land and right. Time to future generation consciousness change. Unite nation to nation, people to people. That's why I pray for. The human creation, not only idea of mind, our prayer, the spiritual practice, and all ceremony coming, or not only Indiana Nation, all nation, to be the more spirituality strong, to protect our future and our life. Thank you, wonderful pressing, or the beautiful relationship. My prayer is all living being, not only human being. Thank you, all my friends, giving globe, all my friends, all our friends. Global peace. Globe without this house, only our house. Thank you, all my divisions.
Thank you. Could state your name.
My name is Justin Friedman. I'm from Renewable Taus. I have some paper I'd like to hand out to the Commissioners. I've given Mr. Gallegos, our Commissioner, a copy already. I'm Justin Friedman. As I said, I live up in La Ma. I've been a resident here in Taus for 50 years and raised three sons here. My wife worked at the hospital for 35 years as a labor and delivery nurse. She just retired a couple of years ago, and we appreciate the Commissioner, the county's oversight of the hospital, and all the efforts you guys have made, and Lady have made to help the hospital out. Very important to the community. Renewable Taus, so I'm going to just read my statement here, and hopefully I come in under five minutes. Renewable Taus is a nonprofit renewable energy and local economic development advocate here in Taus County. We have had a number of interactions with the county, including work-study session alongside Kid Carson Co-op in 2017, and most recently, a meeting with Deandro Cordova last week. And we appreciate Mr. Cordova's time, generosity with his time, and his recommendations on how to proceed with some of our concerns. Renewable Taus is working and communicating with Kid Carson through our board members, one of whom is also a Kid Carson board member, and the other is their economic development coordinator. You may know these people. Two of our members are former longtime engineers with Sandy Labs. Each member brings technical expertise in the local economic development to our group. I've been in Taus almost 15 years, and I would say that. Today, as we speak, two of our members are meeting with Luis Torres at... Luis Reyes, rather, excuse me, at Kid Carson in their attempt, and in the co-op's attempt, to find a developer who will help take on the task of installing 100-megawatt solar array project here in Taus. And this is a project that can power 20,000 homes as well as export energy out of our area. This would also include massive electric storage, a massive electric storage demonstration project here in the county. The electricity generated is not only for purposes of more affordable power for our residents, but as I said, for export to other areas. Most importantly, we hope that this large-scale installation can be a tool for economic development in our county. A project of this size, that's far larger than what's currently going in around the county by Kid Carson, requires the attention and oversight of the county in order to maximize the county's input, possible income, and benefit from this project. The county could be involved for the following purposes: to ensure that Taus County has the option to partner with the developer in a manner which will bring revenue to the county from the possible leasing of infrastructure, sale and storage of solar electricity, or other mechanisms to be identified.
Do you have a minute?
Yes.
One minute.
I have one minute left. My goodness. All right, well, my minutes went by fast. All right. We are asking that the county participate in a planning grant to the state legislature. We would like to work with the county in a study session to look at the possibilities of this for revenue generation to the county and for economic development. And I would like to possibly meet with Commissioner Gallegos in following up on this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. At the infrastructure conference this year, Luis Reyes laid out the whole concept, and it was so well received down there, but there were people at the conference who talked about the partnerships that it's going to take to make all this work. So we need to all get behind this and make it work.
Okay. Just so we would like to follow up in some way, I want to hope to get a planning grant that the county can participate in.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I saw her head. State your name for the reference again.
My name's Arden Diel. And I just wanted to, I didn't want to spend a lot of time talking, but I just wanted to find out if anything happened with Straight Hearts.
There are ongoing discussions between our manager and Straight Hearts, and their contract is, they have six months to definitely find one.
Okay.
So the negotiation period will start soon.
Okay, I just wanted to know who is really responsible for the judgments and the decisions there too. Because there seems to be a lot of managing people, like the office managers, controlling everything.
This reporter made a lot of notes during your presentation.
Oh, wait, okay.
And stuff, so he has that in his journal. And as he begins the negotiation process, he will address it.
I mean, this may be small compared to what I just heard. Just, you know, I love you here. But thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. I saw your head leaving next, and then I saw it. Jacky?
Go first? Yeah.
Sure. State your name.
My name is Jacob.
My name is Mike Davis.
His body's name is Sean Ringer.
Good morning, dear elders. We just wish to sing a prayer song for you all this morning to uplift you all and the whole world right now, and all of us living here. Thank you for having us.
That's a song for freedom, for Leonard Maltier, most famous political prisoner still incarcerated, 44 years for crime he didn't commit, trying to protect his people, way of life, Mother Earth, in Lakota Nation, and the water protectors are here. And we're here to ask you humbly to use your power and influence to help protect this community and the future generations of this community. And we acknowledge and respect the rights to the water of the Taus Pueblo as a first nation, sovereign nation of this land. And somehow, something got slipped in there, and there... People are all being fooled, and they're doing new technological means with these deep-water wells that could wreck this entire community and destroy the ecosystems here for all of our future generations. So please, we want to work with you and the town, and the Pueblo, and the state, and everyone, all of our community, to protect Mother Earth and the watersheds here. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And most importantly, thank you for having us here, to sing that video, and thank you all for being here. All of you in Taus.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ariel Gusterson. I'm going to read this so that I can get all my points. My presence here is to express myself to you as a resident of this county in support of Commissioner Candace O'Donnell's affirmation to the Paris Climate Agreement, and to emphasize the body between climate resolutions and water management, mindful, informed, sustainable relationship with the water here in the county, and to give notice to you as a commission of the intention of the Got Water Group, which is just the citizens who have been organizing to discuss and bring attention to and look for solutions that may be alternative to the section of the Abeta settlement that has to supply mitigation wells. I understand that the county nor the Commissioners are signing parties to the Abeta settlement, but I'm sure you're well aware of what it entails. We're also aware that your commission voted not to sponsor the Taus County Public Welfare Advisory Board, or Advisory Committee, which would have created a voice for the people through you, simply to be informed and heard throughout the implementation of this settlement. So I wish to clarify, first of all, that no one here within our group denies the inherent right of the Taus Pueblo village to retain their water rights, both on land and on paper, that they have reclaimed through the settlement. And in fact, we acknowledge and honor them as the first water guardians of this valley, and we believe that we can learn a lot from their way of life, where they lived for thousands of years and generations upon generations within the means of this valley. Although many hydrologists were consulted, a comprehensive environmental impact study and report was not completed on the supply mitigation well portion of the Abeta settlement. And I believe that it's imperative to the ability to make a wise decision, to have all the correct information compiled and available for the people that aren't making these decisions. I would ask if you agree, and wonder if you would deem it acceptable to endanger the water system of this entire valley simply by rushing decisions without the proper information. And if you or representatives are not willing to voice the necessity for this impact study, we are willing as citizens to push the proper offices and put pressure to ask both for the IES and also to ask for a cease of drilling until we have the real information compiled and understand the full implications of this plan. As it stands, the federally appropriated funding for this project, which is a specific amount for the entirety of the project, has begun to be used for the El Prado wells that are happening right now. And there have been no successful results yet. A first well site failed, and the second one, they are struggling with and waiting for more specialized equipment through this federal funding mostly. And I would just like to point out that there are still the same number of wells that need to be completed as the funding lessens. There has been no successful result. And the articles of the Abeta settlement include a waiver of fault for the federal government in the case of insufficient funds to complete the project, but there are no such safety nets for local stenatories. And that's something that we, you know, as a county, as a town, as a people, should be aware of. I'm under the impression that committing for pre-well exploration drill sites outside of the town limits should pass through county planning, a county planning process. We've heard that that might not even be happening, and if not, we wonder why this process has been passed bypassed. I ask that you and the boards and committees that you have chosen that have oversight over these choices, choose, think carefully, and, you know, avoid quick approvals of current well sites, and realize that you do have sway in the future of how this... and realize that you do have sway in the future of how this implementation happens. I'll just touch on the last few things very quickly. We hope that we can work with you in the future. And we hope that you join us in asking for an environmental impact study. We are currently seeking and creating and discussing solutions for how Taos Valley and the county and the towns' water needs could be met without having to drain the deep aquifer and cause possible damage to our stream systems all throughout the county. I mean, if you actually study the environmental impacts that are possible that are unknown because the full study wasn't made, we could seriously damage what we have in this valley. And so, you had said thirty seconds, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time, commissioners.
Thank you for being here today.
I appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bubba Johnston. My clan is a collection, and my name is Dizzy, but I've grown up shooting. I've lived in the house my whole life. I forgive me, I'm not much of a public speaker. But this is my first time addressing you all here in these chambers. And I'm here today because I'm very concerned about these deep aquifer drilling sites and what that means to the community. It seems to me that these, they're trying to test with these deep aquifers to sustain economic development, which I understand is important. But they are developing at a rate that's unsustainable. I work closely with the water. I live by the hot springs, the Ponte de la Hot Springs. I water my cornfield from there, Montorziante. I also work in town. I work with the Checo Gage, which comes from the Rio Pueblo. I work on the Jose Beniof Martinez Gage, that comes from the Rio Fernando. So, I know a whole lot about our waterways, our streams, our aseas, and a lot of people that work hands-on with all of these. And so, these mitigation wells that are proposed through the Abeta settlement are very dangerous. There's a lot of evidence that links to this. These wells can have a cone of depression, which draws waters from up to five miles away, a five-mile radius. There are two of these wells planned within two miles of our hot springs in Yonkumalo. And this is a serious threat to my life source, to my livelihood as a farmer. If these wells are allowed to be installed and drained at unsustainable yields, then there is a very real possibility that the hot springs will stop flowing. Anyone who's ever been to these hot springs knows how special they are and how sacred they are. There's those hot springs, and then there are also Black Rock Hot Springs, the Stagecoach Hot Springs, and many other springs throughout town. Springs that feed the Rio Fernando, for example. And right now, I see imminent danger in our future. I have a queer little daughter and I'm very concerned about what kind of quarrels we're leaving behind for her, or that I will be leaving behind for her. And right now, it seems like the eleventh hour to be able to, to at least study the issue properly. There's been no environmental impact study, no full review of the impacts that these wells will have. And so, we are going to demand an environment of impact study. I understand that it's not up to you guys necessarily how the proceedings go from here, but we are here to ask for your support and see if any of you would be willing to join us in requesting an environmental impact study. But we are very confident that if this full study is, takes place, then it will reveal the dangers that are ahead of us right now. This is a very important issue to me and the community here. So, I just want this to be on your radar. And yeah, I appreciate your time and thanks for listening to me. And yeah, we'll continue from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Clipp Bane, living in the Rio Fernando. Thank you for letting me speak today. My concerns are that we have this Abeta settlement that was negotiated in secret. There was no disclosure. In fact, it was a gag order that kept it secret from all but a few people. And this is a massive endeavor to reconstruct our water system, even to the extent of taking water from great depth of very questionable quality and pumping it into our aseas, putting it into our mutual domestics. A very, very expensive system with a great deal of federal funding to implement, to initiate it, but no resources to sustain and maintain this very expensive infrastructure. It has every possibility of bankrupting our aseas and our public water systems, opening up the way for the privatization of water in our valley. I've lived here for about thirty-eight years. But when I first came here, I heard a story in the Indian camp camp, which was a scheme to put in a dam in Pot Creek. But most troubling, it would have replaced the aseas with a water conservation district or corporation. We would have lost, as Albuquerque, Berlin, O'Callaghan has lost, the public, the important cultural institutions of the aseas. My concern is that we live in a democracy, but a democracy is only real if the public, the citizens, continue to insist that things are done in a democratic way. And the essential part of that is public participation. Somehow, at every stage of the game, of this particular game, the public has been cut out of this. Despite a massive appropriation of federal funds, we have not been, we have not been, we have not had a, under the National Environmental Policy Act, an environmental assessment, an environmental impact study. And all these things are required by the law. And I hope that you can appreciate that, as has many times in the past, citizens of Taos that stood up and said, "No, we're going to consider this together." We're going to consider it based on the law, based on the needs of our future generations and of the beautiful place that we live in. So, it is late in the game, but we are demanding and we will use all of our resources to bring this community together and make sure that this is properly studied and that the citizens of this valley have an opportunity to consider these very important issues. So, I'm very hopeful that the county will join this effort. It means a delay, but, and I sincerely believe it will lead to some changes in the plan so that we can preserve our resources, our community, our culture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, friends.
Good morning.
My name is Sage. I, my legal name, birth name, is Jeffrey Allen. I've been a farmer in this valley for the last decade, been a steward of both the aseas and just the community in general. I am here with Got Water, and we are very concerned. We are very concerned that the Abeta settlement implementation is very short-sighted, even though decades of studies went into this that are now outdated, based upon recent hydrological data and studies. One such study, conducted by Paul Bower, explains some concerns that even the Abeta settlement implementation studies, the hydrological reports did not take into account. We are here on behalf of the next seven generations. Let us remember that it's not just about today and tomorrow. That some people, including the wonderful people at Taos Pueblo, have been able to plan for seven generations and beyond. We have examples in this community of watershed stewardship in which we can care for our home without destroying our traditions and our livelihood, our land base, our waters. I would like to take into account right now the Tarleton Ranch Eco Village and its relationship to the new El Prado Water and Sanitation District well going in. El Prado Water and Sanitation District is going from twenty-five acre feet a year, supposedly, of water use, which they use more than that currently, to over five hundred acre feet a year. What does this mean for our community? It means more growth and sprawl, endangering this community, endangering the ecological systems that we all depend on, endangering future generations' right to a healthy valley and watershed. We are very concerned that this unregulated and very blurred tapping of the deep aquifer will create growth that is not suitable for the place we are right now today with climate disruption. I watched rivers run dry this past year, and I do not think pumping fossil water from deep in our aquifer and putting it into our stream systems is an adequate solution.
Oh.
This is a greedy solution that does not take into account the healthy balance of ecosystems and also the aseia culture, which has always had a way of stewarding and sharing water resources, not viewing them in a commodity sense, but in a collective, shared sense, where we take into account both lack, and we share that lack, but we also share an abundance. So, might we remember the roots of this community? Might we remember how to think about something more than just now and current gain and look at how this deep tapping of the aquifer will just drive the climate change situation into a place of total insanity? Where we drain our aquifer, the deep aquifer, so much that literally the ground could collapse. This water is holding up the earth. There are studies all around of when aquifers are drained, like Mexico City, it starts sinking. Let's take these things into account now, please. Thank you.
All right. Saying, thank you all for your comments. Thank you for your time and your passion that you've shared with us here today. Appreciate that. Moving on, commissioners, into the next stage of the meeting. Item eight is minutes. Seek approval for the November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen special meeting minutes.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen special meeting minutes. Third call.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigos?
Yes.
Chairman Van Broeck?
Yes.
And B is approval of the December fourth, two thousand eighteen regular meeting minutes.
Motion approved, second.
Motion second to approve the December fourth, two thousand eighteen regular meeting minutes. Third call.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigos?
Yes.
Chairman Van Broeck?
Yes.
And an I is our consent agenda. Commissioners, I will read the items listed according to each of the consent agenda. If there's an item that you wish to be pulled for further discussion or amendment, that would be the next order of business before going into, like, attend the part that matters. Item A, request out-of-state travel for actual reimbursement for Detective Marvin Amigo to attend legal trans-tactical SWAT and emergency response operations from February fifth through seventh, two thousand nineteen, in Las Vegas for that. Item B is approval of DFA Resolution Number fourteen, two thousand eighteen-nineteen fiscal year, resolution requesting to transfer permanent cash from general fund EMS fund due to revenue shortage being experienced. Item C is approval of DFA Resolution Number fifteen, two thousand eighteen-nineteen fiscal year, resolution requesting to transfer permanent cash as identified on Form S five detailing additional reserve requirements for road equipment identified under capital projects number two, need for operations of our oil works department. Item D is approval of budget adjustment for GRT CO Infrastructure three-fourths, bond zero-one-zero-three dash one-seven-six-six to allocate budget for the purchase of real property located at three-eight-four-zero, Highway five-twenty-two pending approvals noted on purchase. Item M is approval of budget adjustment for senior program zero-two-one-nine-dash-zero-one-one-three to allocate budget for the purchase of uniforms for employees preparing carreter and home-delivered meal for senior program. Item F is discussion, consideration, and decision approval of Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-six, a resolution amending and repealing the Taos County Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-one establishing local emergency planning committee bylaws. Item G is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution two thousand eighteen dash fifty-seven, resolution affirming commitment to Paris Climate Accord, environmental sustainability, combating climate change. And item H is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of amendment to the North Central Regional Transit District Amendment of the Intergovernmental Contact to Anna, Villajkowski Valley, Amendment of index D. Commissioners, this is the consent agenda. I have a request, and commissioners, I want to pull item G for amendment to Resolution two thousand eighteen dash eighty-four. So, that will be pulled.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion to approve of the items on the consent agenda, items A through H minus items B, C, and D. And I'd like for those to be discussed a little bit more.
B, C, D, and G, correct. There's our motion.
Second. Third, fourth.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigos?
Yes.
Chairman Van Broeck?
Yes. Item G is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution two thousand eighteen dash fifty-seven, resolution affirming commitment to Paris Climate Accord, environmental sustainability, combating climate change. There was a paragraph that Commissioner O'Donnell would like to read to be added to that, and I would like to give some history of what we both have been trying to do for the last five weeks regarding this, after she adds the amendment, proposed amendment to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be the last whereas, and it would read, whereas Taos County is committed to exploring all clean energy and climate-friendly policies that are viable within northern New Mexico, including electric vehicles, more energy-efficient public buildings, and private building code requirements, and funding all the means viable at our disposal to reduce carbon emissions and protect our natural resources.
Okay. I think that's a good final statement for it. So, with that, would you make a motion that then have that for some discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item G of the Resolution Number twenty-eighteen fifty-seven, resolution affirming commitment to the Paris Climate Accord, environmental sustainability, and combating climate change with the addition to the language that I have just wrapped.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in a second. I had taken the original resolution to the Sustainable Energy Honors class at the high school to get their input. They were in a, they were wrapping up their module that they were in and were planning to give us some feedback and to partner with us on this. and were planning to give us some feedback and to partner with us on this. Commissioner O'Donnell needed to move ahead, so maybe what I would do is challenge that class to, when they get into their next module or the next semester, to bring something to us at that time. They were very interested in it, but the teacher has his class structured, and Commissioner O'Donnell couldn't wait for them to give their input. So we'll follow up with something with that class when they get back into the center.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, I went to the Global Climate Summit in San Francisco, where I met Al Gore, Climate Reality Project. This is a resolution brought by Santa Clara County, and it is being enacted in many places across the country. And I do believe Taos County will be the first in New Mexico to pass a resolution of this nature, and that we're going to encourage all our other counties in New Mexico to do the same. And even if it's just small steps, whether you're no longer buying plastic water bottles, whether you're recycling, whether you're taking the time to turn your heat down at night to 65 degrees, all this eventually adds up. And even though they are small steps, we are in an urgent state of emergency. And I think we get it now finally, and we have to do something.
Percolate.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fambro?
Yes.
Item B is approval of DFA Resolution Number 14, 2018-19 fiscal year. Resolution requesting transfer permanent cash from general fund EMS fund due to revenue shortage. Commissioner Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit more explanation on both, all three items, B, C, and D.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, we've been talking about the challenges we've been facing with the EMS program since we adopted our budget over the summer. And now we are at the point where we are required to supplement some of the shortfall in the revenue with general fund money. We always do give some general fund money to the EMS program, but it's typically not needed until the end of the fiscal year, closer to the end, either the fourth quarter or somewhere toward the end of the third quarter. This year, we are required to move this money sooner than later in order to continue to meet our payable obligations.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take amendment? So, Mr. Chairman, the question is, how is collections?
So the collections are, they're still strong in terms of what we're able to collect, but what the problem is or what the difference is is that we are not billing as much as we had in the past, because we're not doing quite as many transfers. And the reason for that was we realized that a lot of the transfers we were doing were actually costing us more money than they were bringing in. So we were losing a lot of money on certain transfers that stay all the way to Santa Fe. The orders could have been taken care of in a place like Española. We don't get the opportunity to bill past where the services could be performed. And a lot of times, the hospital was recommending me go all the way to Santa Fe or all the way to Albuquerque. And we were then basically losing money from the point we passed this banula on the way over. So we did make a decision to not take as many of those transfers, so therefore, we're not bringing in as much revenue. We are definitely still losing some money, but we're not hemorrhaging. When we were taking those transfers, we were losing quite a bit of money. Now we're losing a little bit. And it is going to be a challenge to continue to go forward. It quite likely will require more general fund money to keep the program at its current standard.
Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Gago. So, billing is strong. Staff is strong. Our transfers are compliant, which is not creating any revenue. And we're going to have to come back in three months, probably, to put more money up to pay that.
It's possible. We're still looking at ways to kind of minimize the losses. Like I said, we're the big losses to small losses, but yes, we're still trying to get a solution to the problem.
So the losses are because of the transfers, which is, I guess we should be happy that there's not any other losses. Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out. We're trying to be proactive, we not have transfers, but if we're going to stop having transfers, then, you know, is this going to be an ongoing budget issue regardless of whether our billing is still strong? Or are we, what else are we paying for?
So it is a challenge, because the revenue does come from the transfers. The majority of revenue comes from universal, it's our transfers. The rest of the services we provide, we are able to get some reimbursement, and we're able to bill for certain things. But for the most part, the program is a community program. We need to be available to constituents of Taos County. We need our EMS services. So yes, the challenge isn't solved yet. We do need to continue to look at all our options and how we can make that balance of being a revenue generator while still being able to provide the services and be located here in our county. As you guys know, you've all heard, the transfers out of town leave us short a lot of time for services that need to be provided here in the county. So our EMS director's been working with Red River to talk about, and the hospital, to talk about different ways to share those transfers and to also not completely cut off our revenue. So we're trying to make that balance. There's also the opportunity to continue training in billing and see what else there is. We are more conservative in our billing. We were, there was a little concern that we may have been pushing the boundaries a little bit in some of our billing, and that could have potentially resulted in clawbacks or the need for the county to at some point pay back if we weren't billing appropriately. So I don't have the answer to that. We don't, we're still working towards getting that answer, but it is a challenge. And there's opportunities coming. Probably talk some more about this during our retreat as we get into the second quarter budget discussion. But it is a challenge, and I can't tell you I have every answer to it.
I guess, I just, we worked from maybe a year to ago, I guess. I don't think we had to try to put money in this, you know, sign it before. So our, you know, what is really, what is the dramatic change? I mean, we as a commission are forced to have that push on non-transfers, or is it going to be something that is going to impact us right now? We're feeling the impact now, and we have to make those changes. I just, just, it's kind of urgent.
Because I'm a little curious, because the transfer issue is relatively in the last 30 days. For this shortfall to be there, I'm looking at other things, but I want to speak to the transfer issue. When a crew goes out on a transfer, that's a crew we don't have serving our citizens. When a crew is on a transfer to Al Green, then to Puyan, Texas, or something, that's, that's an eight-hour trip. So we're eight hours without a primary ambulance responding to citizens. And you have, in here, then we have to have Questa come and respond to transport to the hospital or to Puyansco if they have a crew that day. That's a 20 to 30-minute delay in just getting somebody for, what if it's an emergency? So the transfers, it's not just, you know, everybody loves transfers for the revenue. I look at it the other ways. We're putting an ambulance that's not available, and a crew, very highly trained paramedic and intermediate in basics that are not available to serve our citizens as they need, and it happens. It happens. But your transfer issue has changed in the last 30 days, so this revenue shortfall is not just in the last 30 days, I agree.
Is 200,000, Mr. Chair, sufficient enough to get us through? It's not, I guess we'll come back in three months. I would mention, Mr. Cordova, and ask for another 200,000. Is it a slow bleeding issue? Do we put more in there, hoping that we don't have to come back again? What's the revenue? It's going to pass, so I think it's hard to just keep coming in and asking for that change, you know?
Understood. I'll let Ms. Martinez talk about whether this is suitable for the rest of the year or not, because she did make some objections as to the 200,000.
Thank you, yes. So during the close of last fiscal year, the revenue wasn't already coming in as scheduled. So when we did the final budget adoption for 2019, I did mention the shortage in cash. We do allow for transfers from the buyer excise tax for the operational needs of the EMS program. However, the salary benefits is what's the kicker right now. They have cut a lot of their expenditures, so they really have a relatively small budget. This is just due to, like I tell you, the timing of the things coming for Medicaid billing, the billing processes that have happened, the change-up in the billing codes that have happened, and the staff being certified in billing for Medicaid.
So it's similar to what the hospital experience, and we, or the same rules, they are, they're billing, it's all happening.
We just did this a little bit later, because we were able to support the EMS program because it's a self-generating fund. But we had in the past budgeted transfers to this fund. It's just now, because the second quarter could be the way it is, I do need to transfer at least 200,000. I do project this would last until the end of third quarter. But by the close of fourth quarter, I will have to come before the commissioners, before the fiscal year comes to a close, to at least transfer another $150,000 from General Fund.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gago first, Vice Chair Gago first. I guess then we need to really have a conversation with the hospital again about the transfers. I mean, one way or the other, I think it's going to have a major impact down the road as we're expecting less transfers, less revenue. We have more people sitting around, and it has become a billing issue or has become another issue. I don't want to put it all in. Hospital, considering what they're supposed to be doing by trying to cut those transfers by our request, well then, now, it's almost like we became dependent on the transfer to be a success. And now it's, now it's got bites in the back. And because we're not doing that, transferring. So how do we have that conversation? Does hospitals support less transfers or shorter transfers to Espinoza? They need to move in and have to have this conversation with us, because they asked us to help them, but they're bleeding. Now we're bleeding, so we need to figure out how to work this together. I'd like to.
And Chairman, so the big changes have been in the last six months, is that right?
Well, they've actually been since January, over the last month, Medicaid bill went through the nine-digit coder parameter, and we did some of the staff certification and did the C-DO certification. However, what we're experiencing right now is the true operations of the EMS program without that much revenue coming in. So we will have to continue to transfer money into this program to make it sustain what it is in part for our community. I mean, they do need the EMS services year-round. And I mean, I can't cut this right now. Their salary benefits are the biggest kicker right now. But for the most part, if you think of it, this is the true operating expenses of the EMS program. I can't cut anymore from the operating budget. Right now, they've been limited as far as operating budget. I don't even approve purchases, we don't have to buy stuff. Their supplies are coming from our, from our purchasing department. So for the most part, this is the cost to running ambulance and personnel. And we are experiencing that shortfall because of the changes that have happened recently.
But I'm trying to get a hold of the changes. So is it a coding change so that eventually we'll catch up? Because we're not coding properly? Or is it a lower reimbursement from the federal government?
It's the lower reimbursement, but at the same time, Mr. Cordova mentioned earlier that we were probably billing a little bit more in the past, and we don't want to have to, like, with the White Cross Hospital, they got to pay back Medicaid, like, so many hundred thousand, $1,600,000. But we can't afford that. So we're careful in how we're billing. We're really careful in how we're monitoring the billing process. We don't want to overbill and have clawbacks come back later.
So lower reimbursements from the federal government, there's not a lot we can do about that. We still have to provide the services. There's not a lot the hospital can do about that. That's a Washington DC thing we're stuck with. And is that the bulk of it? Or is it about equal with the losses that we were incurring from transferring past Espinoza? Do you have, like, any quantitative sense you could add?
As Commissioner Fambro mentioned, the major changes to the billing have happened over the last 30 days. We started peeling off back to six months ago when we saw the problem of exasperating. We are the biggest concern of coming back to salary benefit. So even though we're reimbursing a little less, the expenses associated with salary benefit have gone tremendously. We were once, maybe three, four years ago, able to really take advantage of casual employees from other areas that did not have all of the salary benefits associated. We don't have as many of those on our roster. Anyone that pulled us kind of defeated, so we're bringing everything in full-time, which then gives them the full benefits. We just had a major increase to our health benefits, which definitely has taxed from the mental operations of it. When our health benefits go up, we're looking at potential payable enough. All these contribute to why we're a little upside down here.
Yeah, we're getting hit from both sides. We're getting hit from the revenue side, and we're getting hit from the expense side. And I guess, I guess I won't belabor it, but I guess I'm curious about how many of these long-distance transfers, you know, the real effect have had on the budget? What happens to those people who need to go to Santa Fe and Albuquerque who are not taking them there?
Better.
Uh-huh, that was the answer.
Or we're taking them if it's an emergency.
If we have to. Okay, well, obviously, you know, people in medical need are in medical need, and so I know we're doing everything we can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions with regards to ambulance service in both Questa and Puyansco. How is this going to affect this in the meantime and in the near future?
So right now, we still are staffing at Puyansco base. It mainly requires us to take that crew out of there in the future. That's what we've been trying to avoid. We've really done everything we can to avoid minimizing services, which is not good for the community, but that is one potential answer. It really is. So right now, we have not affected Puyansco operations. They are continuing to be staffed over there. We did work with Village Questa to help them get on their feet to get better service out of, out of the village. And I'll let the mayor talk to that, but I think it's been successful in the sense that they are now more self-sustainable in the village, which hopefully will allow us to back off a little bit on the revenue and put that back into our program and thinking about putting our department. Really, the answer is probably going to be working with all of the entities of the county, Red River, the village of Questa, even the townhouse. We have gotten some feedback from the townhouse because we've been billing for some of their events. The argument that the events bring in so much more extra GRT for us, and that should cover our costs isn't a valid argument. We're, we're losing money when we staff an event with all the overtime and everything that's associated with that. And so we are trying to get billed. We are asking them to cover at least the cost of operations during that time. The sheriff has been doing that a few years. The Red River and the town, it's time for EMS to do that as well. So we're looking at every way to increase our revenues without cutting the fundamental service that we have to provide.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, with regards to any given shift that we have, there's three shifts. On the daily basis, two shifts. How, how many staff participated in the shift? And how many ambulances do you have available?
I don't have that answer directly in front of me. I can get that back to people. Right now, we are operating, I think, the same way we did about six months ago. So with less revenue, it's still about the same as we were operating six months ago. And so therefore, yeah, that's part of the problem. One of the options would be to cut those staffing patches down. And we may have to look at that, but then that provides a shortfall within our community that we're really trying to avoid.
But those staffing patterns have to grow to cover the transfers, because when you got two people out of town on a transfer, you still needed response crews here.
So how many ambulances do we have?
We have three in our rotation right now. We're about to pick up another ambulance and maybe retire one of the ones that we have. We could use four. Quite honestly, we could have four and still, you know.
So three ambulances in the Taos Valley are designed to be Puyansco and, and, Chris, Puyansco. Vice Chair Gago. Chair, I'd ask that Mr. Cordova and Ms. Martinez come back in January, sometime maybe first week in February, with something that will be able to not disturb the services and encourage the EMS department that we're not looking to pull back. I don't think, I don't want to speak out of term for the whole commission, but there's something that we can't, a project that we can't do, or we have extra money that's in general, that we have to put into EMS, that we got to put into EMS. It's just that, it's tough to see this. And then, out of the public side, we're here saying, well, we might have to pull back. I don't think we need to pull back. I think we need to move forward. Put enough money in there to get, to provide the services that they're not feeling like they're losing a job or their, their next worry is, what's going to happen? Are we going to get a date off? We don't want to have that in the employee's mind. I think it's important that you guys do what you can, find someone somewhere. If there's a project that we as a commission were expecting to do next calendar year, then we can do it. Throw that at us. I think it's more important that we keep those emergency services going as any of the emergency services that we have.
Into the budget, originally, a couple of years ago, we operated transfers, or if you remember, between like 600 and 800.
And so we didn't increase their budget or anything, but the transfers went from six to eight hundred to close to 2,000. To me, it's obvious. Transfers require more staff, more wear and tear on the vehicles, and less services to our community.
Oh, we could, right.
But it's revenue, so, and, and we're not the only service, I think, that probably deals with that. What would you call it, the dilemma? Yeah, the challenge, I mean, but there's gotta be a balance. Taos Fire averages 600 calls a year, they're almost at 1,000 this year. In addition, are we picking up EMS calls from additional ambulance? They're not a transport service. Being a personnel, just getting care of, can't be transported to Taos.
That's why I agree, Mr. Chairman, that we need to go to putting more money into providing our services. We've got more and more people out there that are needing help, whether it's through drugs or alcohol, or, you know, just trying to survive. So we need to provide those services and the calls need to continue to grow. That's because we have more people living in the area, unknown people, right? I mean, there's residents that are registering, there's residents that are just living out wherever they can. So we provide those services for them as well.
Yeah, we're also rural community with a small rural hospital and much more specialized medical care these days so that there are more people that our hospital has to transfer. So that's our responsibility. We have several things moving in the wrong direction for us. And like Commissioner Guygoz said, we're going to get a little bit of a report, see if there's anything we can do internally to right-size this or that, but otherwise, we're just going to have to do it.
And if you want to share with the commission that we are in constant communication with EMS regarding the spending. Every week, I look at how much they brought in, if there's community deposits for the week, so we are with them on demand.
Thank you.
Mr. Corvina.
And the commission is just to assure you, we are definitely supporting any efforts at the state level to provide more EMS funding. There's always opportunity to look at some funding sources at the state that we do hope are needed.
Commissioner Guygoz. We recently drafted, it's the fourth draft of a fire marshal's office, a fire fund EMS group. What is different this year is the Department of Health originally gave EMS 3.2 million dollars. Will shrink during the last four years to 2.3 million dollars. This year, the proposal is in House Bill Two, there will be $5 million that is included just for EMS through the Department of Health. In addition, the bill that we've been working on with the Fire Marshal's Office out of the PRC and back into the Office of Insurance, there was an additional, because of the reversion money, okay. We're paying 5.2 million dollars to the PRC for administrative costs. The Secretary of Insurance says they can do it for 800,000. So we asked that that money, instead of going to the State General Fund, go to EMS. That would give them close to 9 million dollars, which is what state EMS needs. Our state EMS contributions from Department of Health that is given to them is the lowest anywhere. It's really pathetic. So they've already taken it on themselves, put that 5 million in House Bill Two. So that's the, we just gotta protect it, I'm looking at, we gotta protect it. Then in two years, we have another bill that's already drafted that will drop, that will take conversion money from the fire fund, which is still in the 2020, we listed to 11 to 17 million dollars, and take half of that and put it into a sustainable EMS fund. If that happens, Vice Chair Guygoz and Commissioner O'Leary, then we're not going to be having this discussion. But right now, the state is just, you know, of the 86 million dollars that the fire fund comes up with every year, 48 million of that is going to the fire fund and the rest of it is reverting back to the State General. That money is intended for fire EMS services, so why aren't we getting it? Why isn't it a cash cow for this?
I hope, I hope, Mr. Chairman, me asking these questions because I have a question to taking 200,000, not put it in EMS. It's to put enough in there so that we don't have to have this reoccurring, nobody stressing out in the finance, nor in purchasing materials and filling up those instances with the products we need to provide. So I hope it doesn't work, I just want to make sure that we come back. If we have to pump more money in, we pump more money in.
Protect that 5 million in House Bill Two.
Right, okay.
And let's support in two years, the reversion money from the fire fund going to EMS is in the general fund.
I have no other comments, Mr. Chairman.
We're going after the permanent reversion money, this year, but can we control? You'll lose moving the Fire Marshal's Office if you go after that, so we have to make that decision. Committee that I belong to. Any else, Mr. Corvina?
Just one other, I mean, we do have options within our open grocery seats options. So there is that, I know that's not always the most political, but it is something that we would have to potentially put before the commission if we can't find any other funding sources. We did, we went to the voters and asked for three of the four increments allowed to fund our dispatch center. They'll find that those increments are also allowed to be used for EMS services, and there's one there. So it's just something, we do have options, it's not something that we would want to rush to and put in front of the board to have to reach taxes again, but all part of the revenue. Uh, the revenue, I think it's a, I don't want to give you a false number, it's probably in the 400,000 to 600,000 dollar range.
Just revenue. I see, but if we can get it fixed at the state level, because it's closer to what the EMS portion of it has at a state. There's money that's coming from the fire fund.
That, that's going to take a few months of, yeah.
Oh, then we have to figure out the funding cycle and how they're going to disperse and. No, I know, if it's in, hopefully, a fight, they will be recurring. And then we're looking for, we've got a funding source for additional recovery money, which is going to be done to be authorized.
Okay, so please be as creative as you can, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Corvina. I'm sure, you know, your backgrounds can really put a big impact on what we're, or what we can do to see if we can change there. And my apologies for not being here in the last, being here, I'm sorry to issue and not knowing. But I really would appreciate that as we're, as things are coming to get towards a slim pickings, and they will come in, I would ask that maybe we can have, we can be proactive. I, I don't, I don't see it being an issue that we're trying to approve it now, but it's kind of, it involves all these questions that we're having now to get answers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We wouldn't care to make the most of the regard that I would need.
So approval of resolution 15, 2018, 2019, is that the one?
Yes.
Second.
Clerk Paul O'Lo.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Guygoz.
Yes.
Chairman Fongro.
Yes.
I will be my readers next time.
I didn't see, Mr. O'Leary, was also a resolution 15 for the current fiscal year to transfer permanent cash identified as additional reserve for road equipment for capital projects too. Mr. Habio has an explanation, if you want to hear it, and then we can ask questions.
Please, again, just elaborate on what types of equipment and where it's going.
Is, is, morning Commissioner Lawrence. As you may recall, during the budget cycle, we did put money into the reserves. Part of our ongoing capital needs for the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department is in need of, to purchase, we have the state price agreement, Kenworth, Bontail, tandem for District Two. The tandem that we have in District Two is, and it's on its last legs. So it's just a methodical process that we've been doing the last few years in replacing the equipment. Ms. Martinez and Mr. Corvina did ask us to hold off and to, we had the sufficient budget to make this expense from the reserves and, which you'll see at the next commission meeting, is the actual request to purchase Nland Kenworth T880, which is a tandem, which basically says that there's eight tires in the back of the dump truck. Difference between that and a Bontail. And the purchase price is approximately 169,694 using a state price agreement. And so like I mentioned earlier, we will go to District Two, we've already replaced the dump truck in District Five and, is it two or one, I don't know, so. In District Two, we have already, no, a transfer tractor, we have already purchased another tandem a couple of years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and how is the equipment holding up in District Three?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, good morning. The equipment in District Three, we have that in Mac, it's been there for 22 years, it's been there for 21. That's going to probably need some replacement here pretty soon, obviously. As far as there are any outs, we're not being picky choosy, we're replacing as needed. District Three is holding up.
Chairman.
Mr. Corvina.
I would suggest that you maybe come back with additional needs to us, and so we can identify them. And I did have a constituent ask if you're going to get a smaller mower.
Unfortunately, that's the smallest mower, commercial mower that we can purchase. We would have to buy a residential type mower and re-outfit a residential, well, not mower, a tractor. And so we have to outfit a residential tractor to get anything smaller. But on the commercial side, that's the smallest that we could go. And it is quite large compared to our last one.
So then you just have a different plan of action when you have to mow in rural areas and the roads are too small?
Yes, I've already spoken with my coordinator about that and kind of bumping heads right now about trying to find something smaller or a different plan of action. We'll be doing it by hand, take longer, more man-hours, but that's going to happen in the future.
Do you have an idea what a residential type mower would cost?
I was looking at some proposals that cost some P O Ds, between 50 and 200,000 dollars, just for the trucks itself. And they are a smaller machine, yeah, but to outfit it with the proper mower head, that's, I haven't gotten any numbers back on that yet. Like, I would like anybody that I will find that will match that size tractor.
So what is your recommendations?
The mower we have is more than sufficient, the rural roads, yes, it is, it does leave, it does leave kind of a mess, but in the same respect that constituents complaining about the tractor being too big. Some people are calling me saying that the branches are scratching their trucks, the cars, and possibly a mirror these days is almost the same price as a car.
Maybe you could come back with the public at some point. It does look like we still have some money left in the equipment reserve, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Guygoz.
Thanks, yeah, I think you guys are doing a good job on making choices about equipping the need, appreciate it. I'd like to feel a little more comfortable that we're getting the absolute most out of it we can, with good planning. But we'll talk about that in the retreat, thank you.
I just enjoyed drawing, jabbing Mayor Barone when we were erroneously reporting that we weren't plowing the roads because you guys were at a convention. Mayor Barone had told the radio station that, now, Taos County is the one with the new equipment, we're the one with the old. I thought that was pretty cool, I thought that was pretty cool, he said that.
Chairman, on that note, you want to mention that we are fully equipping this vehicle with the plows and all the safety lights and everything that are really going to help maximize that equipment, especially bargains in this area.
Pleasure, Commissioner.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, of DFA Resolution Number 15, 2018, 2019, and one. Resolution requesting transfer permanent cash, so you can identify.
Second motion, second to approve DFA Resolution 15 for this fiscal year. Clerk Paul O'Lo.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Guygoz.
Yes.
Chairman Fongro.
Yes. And finally, approval of budget adjustment for GRT CO Infrastructure Three Quarter Fund 0103, 1766 to allocate budget for purchase of real property at 30, 40, probably 522. Mr. Corvina.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, commissioners. This, as we had discussed a while back, regards to the purchase of property. This piece of property is up in the northern part of the county, just north of Questa Church. It is, it's a former church, the Vinnie Ministries Church, I believe. This property is adjacent to our Questa Public Works yard, and we actually do share a well with this property at this time. The use of the property will eventually be a community center. The Tier Fire District had, at one time, envisioned a community center next to the firehouse. That was a very expensive plan, a very expensive, to get that completed. So this is an opportunity for us to get a fully functional building that will really serve as a good community center. At this time, we agreed upon a price, and there's still a lot of contingencies. And we're just asking to move the money, to have the money in place. And then we'll come back to the board with the final approval of the purchase agreement, if one's to know, if it appraises. As you know, government has to have, we can't be more than an appraised value. And so at this time, we've agreed upon a price of 147,000 dollars for the property, which does seem to be well-known appraisal price, and it also comes with them installing a new SEPT system for the property. So what's that, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, so what is the appraisal?
We don't have that yet. Right now, we're just requesting to move the money over, the appraisal, I believe, is scheduled for January. Let's just say the market is pretty busy in Taos right now, and appraisers are really booked. So the earliest they could get to any kind of appraisal, I think, was January 15th on this particular property. So at the next commission meeting, we'll come back with the purchase agreement, and you'll see all of the details of it. But we've still got a lot of contingencies to meet before we can take it forward. Finance for their approval and to finalize the purchase.
This is the ask for?
Uh, the name of the issue is, well, in addition, commissioners, what this acquisition could possibly do is free up some land that will be each of the Tier current fire department, that will be donated to do an expansion, which the Tier at the time, we're choosing not to do any kind of fire expansion because they wanted to put information as one, because of this potential acquisition, there's probably another acre or two that are going to be donated by private individual to give the Tier Fire Department the much-needed space to be able to do an extension to the building that they currently have. So it does serve multiple benefits, then just purchasing something and having it become a community center.
Mr. Chairman, one more note on the building, just for informational purposes, it does have fully functional showers, which can also serve in an entrepreneurial, for a kind of disaster. So if we could get that in consideration, there's certainly still pending different expansions that we've already had. Mr. Stock, take a look at it, our real estate agent, we have a rate, they're looking at it. So it does seem like a pretty sound building, it looks like a great investment.
Speaking of showers, Commissioner O'Lo.
And, Mr. Chairman, does Questa have a community center? We're talking further north, this is a community center for the Tier, Alito, so.
Sunshine, that, that whole area there is probably the Alito, Sunshine, Buena Vista community. So there's probably certain three communities in that area, that community center.
All right, thank you.
Budget adjustment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve budget adjustment, that's listed by ID that has been discussed here today. Clerk Paul O'Lo.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Guygoz.
Yes.
Chairman Fongro.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, that was a really good expression, thank you, Ms. Martinez and Mr. Corvina. Next item is item 10, I'll ask Mr. Jason Figueroa, risk manager, to come forward to present his risk control policy and procedure manual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'll be real short for this because I don't think I've had a chance to review. I'll be real short for this because I don't think I've had a chance to review the documents at all. So just a brief introduction. Taus County, all risk control and the safety of its employees in the high regard. Task, the tasks performed by Taus County personnel are essential for all the productive functioning of all our communities in this county. However, no risk is so urgent or important that time cannot be taken to perform a work in a manner that ensures the safety of all personnel and general public and minimizes the county's risks of exposure. Taus County shall never food its risk default program to assist all departments in their efforts to maintain a safe and healthy workplace, inform employees of proper work habits and procedures, and eliminate risk exposures whenever possible, which will maximize the potential for any risk pre-emired. So in short, we're gonna be holding the employees more accountable for the use of their equipment, how they operate, and their day-to-day functions through all departments. This will save a lot of money in the long run if the employees use the equipment and their tools as they're supposed to, without cutting corners. People don't get injured, we don't have to replace tools, the long run will really save. If you guys have any questions about this risk default manual, feel free to send me an email. I'll answer any questions or if you come back and present any better.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
We are voting on this today, sir.
We can, we don't have to.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would ask that we don't take a vote yet. I wanted your input. I wanted you guys to take a look at it. Mr. Figueroa's been working on this for a long time. He's also introduced it to the Safety Committee, he's introduced it to our leadership team, and now we're introducing it to the board, and the sheriff's gonna probably ask some input. So we wanna make sure we get your input. This is the type of policy that can be adopted by the manager, but we wanted to get input. So at this time, I would recommend that if you get a chance to read through it, if you have concerns, questions, or input, leave that Mr. Figueroa know, and then he'll come back for a future important decision by then.
There is a program that's available to counties through Mexico counties, a local government view, training, webinars that our employees can do free of charge, and Mr. Figueroa is going to implement that program, hopefully after the first of the year, with his body coming, the risk management specialists for the rest of counties. He's got some really good things available that he wants to bring in. His RAP program is getting revamped. He'll be ready to kick that off before too long. So he's making a lot of progress here, and there's a lot of things that he will be utilizing, hopefully in the near future, that'll bring our rating down and just make our employees safer as we start.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to just give him my questions, and you can answer them at a later time. So I was curious on page one forty-four, the identifiable trends that you're seeing in toward claims, the definition of the facility, and does that mean a first aid kit in every department?
Commissioner, look at our, so you're just saying one forty-four of our packet? Maybe if you give him this page number, which is just above it, so one forty-one in our packet.
Page thirteen.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
And then, page nineteen, that is the, of the document, the definition of facility, will there be a first aid kit in every department? And also to include community centers and the senior centers? I don't know if they have the first aid kit recommended. Also, page twenty, the emergency action plans, you said the managers are responsible, and I, clarification, does that mean every single department head has to do their emergency action plans, or can they just use a boilerplate shared by all departments? I was curious on page twenty-three, how many certified crash, construction people you have in the Sheriff's Department? And then, the, on page twenty-eight, related to the Sheriff's Department, and then the regulatory OSHA posters, as far as where you place those, you know, which departments? And I was curious about the confined space entry training, whether that's done now? I like the hazardous materials inventory defined, if you could, you know, I'm curious what kind of hazardous materials we have, if you're probably talking about pesticides, the MSDS, SDS copies, I guess. So my question, too, is timeline training. And finally, I would like, I'd like to see a timeline of all these various trainings, and I know HR tasked them with the confined space entry training. So I see a lot of trainings, I see, you know, like the need for first aid kits, and I'd like you to come back with a budget as far as what this implementation of this plan is going to cost. And I think it's very well done. Thank you so much. I document with a very well-done document.
So these documents, I've been working with J H Travis and using the body company with New Mexico County. They reviewed all this, they added some definitions, so that's your question about the after-definition will be added, confined space training is more defined inside the documents from this coming. As far as the training, Commissioner Thambr did state, these trainings are gonna be implemented to all county employees with the program that I get. They'll be able to send an email to each employee saying that your training's been reviewed or is past due, it's gonna be coming up, whether it's every two years on a annual basis, whether it may be. They'll let me know, I'll send it to them, they have X amount of time to complete it. They'll send me a notification that they haven't completed it, or if there are deadlines coming up, like remind them to take it. And it's a very easy thing. Local government views, kind of, try to not necessarily take over, but it's more recognized than intervention. And it's gonna be very beneficial to all these employees. So that's your questions. I'll get you a budget. And the other question that you asked was our definitions, first aid kits, everything's gonna be uniform as best as we can for every county employee that we have, for our first aid kits, the emergency action plans. We have a universal emergency action plan now, and they just tweaked it to fit their specific department.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chair Gairos? Mr. Chair, I kind of guess if you can, later on, a different date, just give me the page number if you have this in the risk control plan. As you're putting more, or not more, tasking employees more to be safer operating, there's been implementation of doing site inspections of your vehicles, all that stuff. Is there also some security, like for the employee that is re-put tasked to get some work done, and they feel it's an unsafe practice or unsafe piece of equipment, if there's no recommendations, that they'll be recommending of not getting job done? And there's gotta be some kind of right that the employee may feel it's not a safe environment, or if there's not a safe practice under supervision or proper use of a modified tool that seems to be homemade. Do we, do you have something that saves the employee from not being reprimanded, from not wanting to get attached by?
Then it's all gonna fall back on the chief of command, so this employee will notify their supervisor, their supervisor, like the final call from there. We've already experienced some similar activities as far as only device, helping them do their job safer. And instances like that, along with it's approved by, or inspected, and deemed safe and properly installed, it's the properties of equipment for that, but they purchased it on their own, or whatever it may be, installed it. It's gotta be inspected property, let's say by fleet or whoever has the final say over the equipment, and the, their supervisor will have the final say on that.
Appreciate that, that's important to keep that, that opportunity for an employee to speak up about feeling that there might be some intimidation.
Yeah, in no way, there should employees, I know they're gonna probably get the feeling that we're trying to micromanage them, and we're not gonna do the micromanagement. They're not gonna get reprimanded, it's not gonna be any kind of high discipline action. If there's something that happens that can be prevented, then I'll probably have a talk with them and see what we can do to not have, let that happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so at this time, you don't need action, this is your first draft.
This is first draft.
When you're ready for us, if you have individual questions, his office is right upstairs, across from executive, so let's get this enacted as soon as we can.
Feel free to shoot me an email, and I'll answer any kind of questions you guys have.
I see our numbers and our, and work comp, and then multi-line, and, you know, other than this, sure, we had a little anomaly in our work comp plans, but, I mean, we were the lowest of the low until this year, we're one hundred and eleven percent right now. Unfortunately, like I said, this is the one year of a ten-year study, that we're not even, we're often aren't too low on the other end, because it was just a freak one incident that caused us. So I applaud everything that you've done, to keep our numbers where they are, you look really good, the ten-year numbers, I think you want to call it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we're not allowed to talk about the identifiable trends in toward claims, that has been discussed in executive session, I'd like to have an executive session to get a handle on what's happened and what those identified trends are.
What do you do with work comp?
I do mainly work with work comp, I do work with Mr. Thambr that care in the toward things. As far as to get a handle on more of the towards, Mr. Thambr, are you able to answer some of them?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I will bring you an update on all claims that are toward claims through lawsuits and also EVO claims in January.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Jason, thank you.
Item eleven, under Resolutions and Ordinances of Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Approval of Resolution Number Two Thousand Eighteen dash sixty-seven of Resolution Pursuit to the Open Means Act, Establishing Public Meeting Procedures of Taus County Board Commissioners. Are there many changes? There's hardly any that I could find.
No changes from last year's document.
Under the Commission. Motion, second, to approve Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen dash sixty-seven, our Open Meetings Act Resolution Annual Requirement. Clear call over.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes, thank you, Legal and Executive for giving that. I think it was Commissioner O'Donnell's suggestion a couple of years ago, we need to start putting that in place before the first meeting, so that we can actually do this, so thank you for fixing that years and hours. Next item, under Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. It's item A, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding a MOU Between Taus County and the Department of Transportation, NMDOT, Regarding New Mexico Sixty-U S Six Four Reconstruction.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, basically, this MOU is to allow the, an NMDOT to have access to county-owned easements, specifically here on Albright and on an entrance heading toward the jail. They need to have access to those easements as they continue their work on the sidewalks moving north. And so it's really just to make sure that they're okay with, or that we're okay with them taking action within those intersections and the need to hold easement on both Albright and when entering in, so we have to enter into an MOU. It has been reviewed by Mistrado, and I recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Donnell.
We're giving them the land or the right to easement?
Um, I believe it's just the right to easement. We're not giving it to them permanently, we're giving them the ability to work within that easement until they're done with the project.
And will they be adding, improving these intersections, like with deceleration lines or?
Um, as I understand it, this is specific to the sidewalks, as we've seen them do all the way up to Albertson's and Opostara, that's what they'll continue doing going north from here. So at this time, that's all that they've indicated, this would be for, I did ask about the lights, of course. The lights are supposed to be part of the future project, but not the sidewalks. So at this time, that's still a few years out, according to EVO.
Seems like the sidewalks that we put in are fine. Are you saying they're gonna replace those?
I don't know exactly if they're in place, they, I don't know, I don't have the details of that, though. They may not replace everything on ours, it does seem like they're pretty much there, but for the most part, they do need to get into the easement. I think they are planning to do some major stuff in the intersection, when they do get the lights, they're gonna need electrical upgrades to that area, so I think that's another requirement, but then we need easement, so we can do those electrical upgrades.
Can we plan our EV, possible plugs, charging station with the electrical being moved out to the road?
I still do that.
I still like that to be our charging place for the electronic vehicle, an issue that we're going to ultimately bring into light here, sir.
I will check on that, sure.
Cool, then I'll answer to you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, so how long are we looking at the easement being? It's a construction easement, correct?
Essentially, yes, um, you say like, have the date to fill it up here, because I don't know that, but I'll talk.
Should terminate three hundred and sixty-five days from final project.
They said, they said worked on the current sidewalk for the last, what is it, three years? It feels like three years.
So yeah, the effective date is the date when the last party signs, and then, as the chairman mentioned, terminate three hundred and sixty-five days after the final project close out in a sentence. So they do give themselves quite a bit of time to, in case they don't get it right here, so they give themselves the time they need.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, not related to this one, but, you know, I'm paying more attention is, trying to get to town, and how dark it is, how there are no, there's no lights. Did they include any lighting conditions on the project? If not, what would we have to do to, you could just research it, to add some more lights from five eighteen up to, I guess, here, you know, just where it's dark.
Michael's upstairs, working out a plan and proposal, and the town has agreed to do some lighting changes. Michael's trying to, not master plan the whole thing, but he's, he's, he's making sure that there's a lighting plans for all of that area, that the area that Commissioner O'Donnell has brought up as well, not just the intersections.
And I was told by someone at DOT, there are fifty-six light bulbs currently out, the whole stretch, and that they may, the DOT may be willing to help us when we have to install new ones, but.
There's a different light that Michael is trying to get people to, it's more expensive, but it did last, he's not here to say, I don't understand, but it's, it's a lot longer, but it's more expensive, or it's more durable.
Now, the solar power, can we get like some solar, no? I don't know, just wondering.
And in regards to the lighting, the request, Commissioner O'Donnell, I have asked, is not currently included in the plan going forward, so that is what I'm trying to find, who I will talk to at DOT that is responsible for the safety component. So it is gonna take some more work for us to kind of get them to understand the situation and add those safety components to the project. This current administration, like the local governments, take the responsibility and the cost of that. So I'm hoping they may add a change next administration, or at least share it with us, so that we're not retiring on the book. In regards to the lights that are out, there should be an email, let me know if they're county, if they're within the county, it'd probably our responsibility, and we should probably work with a kit car center or a vendor or some sort to get those replaced, and we'll work on that, so.
There's two in Commissioner O'Donnell's favor, intersection, I don't know, there's just coming back to their state night for multi-line.
Do you have the C10 intersection?
Mr. Chair, I would, just, let's entertain a conversation further with different purposes or different ways of providing that light because we at the village at one point, it's an agreement with D.O.T., they put lights there that were basically out of stock anymore. So, we're having our time trying to find them. The lights worked good, but it sure did soak up a lot of power for us. So, let's really be cautious about how we do this. Let's not jump into it because if we end up carrying that responsibility, it's going to be our tax on our end.
Please include Michael Sontz in your conversation.
Because if we could install some solar light...
Whatever possibilities are available. I think it's just...
And to better well be done.
They're just trying to take that step slowly and make sure we get the right stuff.
You have to have some bill after they became our responsibility after fixing these five minutes.
It is, it's a lot. It's a lot. I wish that the village would have taken more, taken a couple more steps to kind of make sure that that was going to be energy conserving, power, and then we're going to be responsible for. So, it is costless. And it's still costless. You know, take those lumps.
So, Mr. Chairman, who's, Michael Sontz, someone?
Do I stand?
Oh, okay. That's James Montoya. Okay. Plagio the Commission.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the MOU between Taus County and D.O.T. Regarding New Mexico 68 U.S. 64 Reconstruction. Clear color.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes. And 13 is a county manager reported matters. I'll start by introducing our lobbyist, Ms. Patricia Quintana.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, we did a word R and P for lobbyists to Ms. Patricia Quintana and I'm here consulting. She's here today to help. So, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to her first to help give you guys a legislative update. She's already been working very hard in regards to attending the C and all of the interim committees and the committees that meet up to the session. So, last week she came back with quite a bit of good information for us to hear in regards to what the funding looks like. We hear a lot about the new money, but there's already going to be restrictions on that new money in a sense. And not all of it will be reoccurring, so will be not reoccurring. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Quintana to talk to you about the legislative update. And then, I'll jump in with some of my suggestions and recommendations for legislative priorities for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Corleba. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman and Commission Members. Again, I'm Patricia Quintana. And I'm delighted to be here and look forward to representing not only U.S. Commissioners and Mr. Corleba, but Taus County's oil and sand day. As Mr. Corleba mentioned, I have been tracking a multitude of different interim committees this year already because I have one or two other small clients that I work with. What I gave you was just kind of a bullet form for the slide update. The first half of this really is giving you an idea of, you know, the session being a 60-day session, the issues that usually are taken up on a 60-day session. It convenes on Tuesday, January 15th. I'm not going to go through all the details. One of the things that's important for us to talk about is the pre-filing dates, which opened yesterday. And all that means is it gives legislators the opportunity to draft and file prior to the session pieces of legislation. This is important and great for us because, and for me, is a lot easier for legislators because we get that up in front. So, the day the session starts, they can start introducing the bills. It allows me then to just really work on where those bills are going to be referred to with committees and help that legislator move those through quickly. It's just a way of using our time more efficiently. The last day of session will be March 14th. The governor's going to have till noon on April 5th to act on legislation. And then, after that, anything that she doesn't act on will be a pocket veto. So, that's just a little bit for your identification. But as of now, I've been attending various interim committees, Legislative Finance Committee, Revenue, Stabilization, and Tax. These are the two primary committees that really affect what counties or municipalities do. They deal with tax issues, funding issues. In addition, natural, water, natural resources, economic development, health and human services, mortgage finance, et cetera. Some of the topics you brought up today are regarding health and human services, your EMS, some funding. There's a lot of issues around corrections. I've been tracking that. They did a great report last week in LOC regarding the issue of EMS services, the funding for that. And we can visit more, Chairman Farrow and Mr. Corleba, a little more detail of what you were talking about. I have an idea of that. But a lot of the issues around mental health corrections, a lot of the issues that are facing counties and statewide regarding what to do with those that are incarcerated when they're ready to go back into community. Many times they don't have a place to go. There's a lot of issues around mental health. I know that here in Taus County, you know, we are losing our mental health sort of clinics that are helping those on opiates and other kinds of drug addictions. There's a lot of discussion going around that and looking at funding towards that in the future. So, as of last weekend, as of yesterday, because yesterday I attended a, I attended a tax and rap committee, but there's $1.1 billion of new monies as of this month's revenue projection. Now, that may change kind of in January for the next revenue projection. It may get up to $1.5 billion. But as of today, we're looking at $1.1 billion of new monies. Now, Legislative Finance Committee is considering with the input of all their analysts, using approximately $400 million to $500 million of that for recurring monies. The discussion has been around rebuilding and backfilling a lot of the monies that were taken from different agencies and groups to build that 2020 budget. So, we don't know how that's going to be used exactly. Legislative Finance Committee is still talking about how that money's going to be used, but that's one of the discussion points that's come up for the use of this money. In addition, $950 million is being discussed to use for non-recurring money. The discussion has been to utilize this amount for capital projects, vehicles, infrastructure, preschool buses, et cetera, et cetera. Now, how they're going to divvy that up between all the legislature, that's still up for discussion. There's also, and down below, an additional $237 million approximately of severance tax bond monies. Typically, that pot of money is used for capital projects. What the legislature is discussing right now is potentially putting that $237 million into the permanent severance tax fund for future, for future years and focusing primarily on the $950 million for capital projects statewide. That has not been decided. The discussion is there. They will be deciding that as we move into the session. So, I think, you know, hearing some of the discussion this morning on EMS vehicles, I know there is a request in one of the priories for vehicles for the sheriff's department and infrastructure for roads is, I think, a big portion of that. I think we will see an opportunity to get funds from those plots of money. Now, in a year where there's so much money, everybody comes out of the woodwork with their hand out. So, you know, Mr. Corleba and I have talked about how to be very strategic, how we put this together. But that's kind of what is going on there. The other thing is 80% of the new monies generator comes from oil and gas. The price dropped from $70 a barrel to $50. For every dollar that that barrel of gas drops, the state of New Mexico loses 17 million. So, you know, that's just something to keep in mind. In addition to that, looking at 2019, the upcoming year, there may be an additional $1.5 billion. Right now, the 1.1 is what we currently have in 2019, but they're looking as if oil, gas revenues continue, that's what we may have. The other discussion is how much to put in reserves. They're talking 25%. There's a, they're, they're looking at a long-term range of a recession. Should we be a little more frugal, a little more conservative about how we do all that? There are a multitude of unknown factors that may impact the numbers that I just presented to you. Pension reform, for instance. PERA is asking the legislature for a $200 million infusion in House Bill 2 for recurring. Now, LOC has not really taken that up. They have not committed to saying yea or nay. They will be discussing that further. The other thing is, we've got the public school lawsuit, which could potentially be $500 to $600 million. The federal government found that New Mexico was not providing suitable education for kids at risk and particularly from cultural, different cultural backgrounds. Medicaid stability, that may be an issue. So, all of these factors I just meant as unknown may have implications for recurring funding. The recurring money may also go up to $600 billion. Again, we're not sure. There's a lot of factors. Oil and gas is a little volatile. And then, there's a lot of other policy issues that may affect Taus County as related to various tax changes. The New Mexico Municipal League and Mexico counties have put out a priority list that I believe we are on board with to support. I will be tracking those. Those pieces of legislation will either have direct or indirect impacts to Taus County. But this is just a quick nutshell, in a nutshell, what is happening up to this point. One of the things that I will be working closely with, Ms. Corleba with, and probably some of the directors of the other departments, I would like to make sure that we have a folder for each legislator with all the details of what they are going to be carrying. That way, they know, I know, and it makes it easier for us to work together as legislators and myself in representing Taus County to make sure we get our priorities pushed forward. With that, I won't have to take any more time. I'll turn it back to Ms. Corleba. If there's any questions or comments, I am very happy to answer those. And again, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
There's also talk of establishing a one-time infusion for just roads and bridges.
Yes.
Which would be carved out of whatever the one point, last week it was 1.2, this week it's 1.1, maybe it'll be 1.5 hopefully. So, that's going to take a big chunk out, but that's where all of that...
Yes. That was discussed as well. Things happened around yesterday. And, so, yeah, there's a lot of issues.
Only to have one type of charred projects, roads and bridges.
Okay. And again, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. I'm very grateful. I want to thank Ms. Rory Muffet as well, who's been very helpful when we prepare our legislative priorities. She's also our grants administrator who helps us get our list down so we can hand out the most recent capital basis to all of you. You may recall, last year, I think it was a page and a half. We're down to about half a page. So, I want to thank her and all of our staff for making it possible to get these grants expended out. That is very favorable for us when we go back and ask for more. There are statistics that are compiled by Legislative Finance Committee and the staff over there that shows those numbers. And Taus County is very favorable. And it shows how we spend our money in regards to what we've been received, or what we've received. I also want to quickly mention, before I get into my recommended priorities, there have been many requests from nonprofits for the county to be our fiscal agent. Once again, this year, I'm going to take the stance that we cannot meet every request from the nonprofits. We do not have the capacity to be able to handle every request. We started with one and before you know it, we had 10. So, it is until we have a process in place in which we can truly vet these out objectively and be able to say no to some and yes to some, if that's the case, the answer is probably go to all. The last time we did sponsor a nonprofit legislative priority, I was for Rock and Roll Court. We were not able to actually expend that money. We never got a notice to proceed from DFA and it was a challenge immediately. We ended up losing that money and it got appropriated, I believe, to the schools or someone else. So, for this year...
To the schools.
Yeah. So, this year I did make that decision as a manager, mostly for the sake of the capacity of Ms. Montoya. We do have a CDPG grant this year that's very time-intensive, labor-intensive to manage. We're applying for Federal Land Access Program, more federal money that we're very hopeful on. But once again, it's a heavy lift and a very hard to keep up with. So, I wanted to mention that. We also gave you guys a copy of our ICIP, our most recent ICIP. I wanted you to see that. That's basically, that is the basis of how we set up our top five, or our top six requests here. So, I'm going to go through those at this time with you. That's this page here. And these are my recommendations. And the reason we're talking here today is obviously to get the input of the commission. I want to hear what your concerns are, if there's anything that isn't captured here. But number one on our list, the historic county courthouse. As Ms. Quintana mentioned, we are trying to be very strategic, but I am very confident that this project is a great statewide project. The way we were received by the CDPG council, the way we were able to provide a presentation to them, that really kind of blew them away. It made me confident that we should go after the entire funding needed to complete the project. So, we do want to ask for $2 million, but we want to make sure it's a very strategic ask and we're going to ask everybody. I want to ask every senator, every representative, and the executive branch to consider funding this because it is a statewide priority. Our courthouse on our Taus Plaza is just as important as the Palace of Governor's is on the Santa Fei Plaza. And, you know, there's definitely statewide support for improvements to that building anytime it's asked for. We've gotten support from the town of Taus. They are trying to help us with funding that they had for the final fresco up in the mirror room. We can't get to that final fresco until we complete the project. So, it really is important to me that we go and ask for the entire amount of money that we need. We got the $750,000 in CDPG. The commission has basically matched that through either commitment from our general fund or our own proceeds. So, that puts about 1.5 million on the table, but that really only gets us through phase one. The additional $2 million will give us pretty much what we need to complete the project beginning and end. And that we, we all get to stand there at the end and cut the ribbon on a very, very important project, not just Taus and Taus County, but the entire state. So, that is our number one priority this year. That's going to be a full court press. I feel like we are quite capable of achieving our goal this year by asking the way we are intending to ask. We have a great presentation that Ms. Montoya and our architects on the project put together for CDPG. And I think we can use that and repackage it a little bit and get out there to every representative, senator, and the executive. So, that's our number one on my list. Number two, the Veteran Cemetery, that's been a high priority of ours for a long time. It's also a top priority of our senator, representative. Mr. Haran Yon has been really looking at this project for a long time and has a great idea. After some communication with the Veteran Affairs Department and the senator, we were hoping that we can get some money into House Bill 2 for this project. If we can achieve that goal, therefore, we have some recurring money potential. We also get the state to put their skin in the game. And that's what it's going to take for the state to really sponsor this cemetery for the long haul. And we know that we need their help in order to be able to maintain it for the long term. So, that's a very big project on this, for this commission and for the state. And we hope that if it gets into House Bill 2, that it really could get the momentum it needs to keep moving and we won't have to continue to cobble together $150,000 this year, another $100 next year. It's a $4 million project, jet roughly. And if we don't get the full support, we're never going to get to the final, you know, completion of it. And we all know how important that is. Number three on our list, our Sheriff Department's vehicles and equipment. We're asking for $150,000 there. The sheriff has kind of looked outside the box. We've talked about, besides just asking for vehicles, he has ideas to ask for IT for his vehicles, basically equipping those vehicles to provide more opportunity for the officers to get work done while they're out in the field. Really using IT and technology to bring them closer to their office at the same time, giving them the tools and resources they need to do their job more efficiently. So, we certainly support that request. IT is always, in my mind, a very, especially we have a way to use that IT. It's very beneficial because it's typically a one-time upfront cost that many of them need to be revisited say every three to four years, his upgrades are required. So, that's a big ask. Number four on our list, as we talked about earlier, ambulance. We've discussed this often throughout the year. We've discussed this often throughout the year with our challenges in the EMS department. We feel it's fair to ask for a new ambulance, a 200,000 dollar ask for that, even though we are getting one from our contract with the hospital this year, we still could use another ambulance. We always could have one. The most up-to-date is important for everybody. We don't want to have to push our vehicles to the limit where they may not be there for us, and we never want to have a failure of an ambulance or a vehicle. Number five on our list, some of these still on this year when we did do the grand opening, ribbon-cutting of the new fire district. Representative Gonzalez was there, and he spoke to the community about trying to help equip that fire building with a new tender. So, we're going to ask for a new fire tender at the cost of 350,000 dollars. And then, our sixth...
Did you have any fire back?
I have to find.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Number six on our list, community centers. We've gotten requests from a lot of our individual community centers. We've had a request from Pampa, from our several community center, Alprova as well, to come to us with a request. We would like to kind of ask for a loan somewhere. We also have alternative funding from other sources here at the county to try and put some money into these buildings. But as a whole, if we could get, if they could ask for 200,000 dollars, we would definitely be able to spend that quickly and improve our community centers. So, those are my top six recommendations for the board. I certainly want to hear what the commissioners feel about those, and if there's any suggestions to add to that.
What are these things called, the communities centers? Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
There's all of them.
Anything, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly am happy to see that both the historic and veteran cemetery, one and two, I've been on those for many years now, and hopefully, we can get something out of the legislature.
Well, it's a big ask, but like I said, it really brings everyone together, so I feel like this is the kind of request all five of you can support, the town will support. Everybody will benefit by improving that building and completing that building. As I mentioned, it's the last government-owned of the plaza. It may inspire the other property owners around the plaza to do the improvements needed to their buildings to kind of just bring new life to that plaza as a whole. We've also learned that historic buildings like ours, the more you use them, the longer they last. So, you've definitely got to bring it up to modern day and then utilize it, put it to use. So, that's our goal.
And, Mr. Chairman, the other positive factor, if things come to fruition, both the veteran cemetery and historic courthouse, is that they boost economic development as well. And so, that is a good plug to use at the legislature as it develops.
And Patricia, you see, this is our list. This is our priorities. Anything that's added to this must come back to this body before it's out.
And on that note, Chairman, I would like to, you know, give you guys some time to think about anything additional, let me know about that. But on the January 8th meeting, I'll give this back to your resolution form, so that we can commit as a body to these, and any new things that might pop up in between that time, so that, as you mentioned, you're all committed to the priorities, and that's what we'll go after. For the year, our main, oh, sorry. Our points of contact for the legislature will be myself, Mr. Haramion, and Ms. Quintana. And of course, all of you are very useful and helpful. Every time you're in Santa Fe, it does help with your kind of helping sell our priorities.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Corla, Ms. Quintana, I think that what we should probably consider also, as you mentioned earlier about the possibility of dedicating for bridges and roads, that we would look at and having a pregame strategy, what roads and what bridges we go identify to be, you know, on it right away, so we're not coming back and scrambling to try to figure out what we're doing. If they say, "Taos County, what bridges and roads can you touch right now?", we know exactly what we're going.
And on that note, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gareos, Camino de Medo is still our number one. We do have a fully engineered plan for that road. We didn't ask for the big ask this year, because we have the means to be able to resurface that, but that's the perfect example. If there's an opportunity, we have a shovel-ready project that we could continue to move forward in conjunction with the town. We also know how important Blueberry Hill Road is to us, and we are in the design phase of that. We'd be more than ready to be able to put in a request for Desa on Blueberry Hill Road if we need be. So, I agree with you. We are ready, at least for Medio, which is a huge project, to be able to put that in front of them and say, "This is ready to be spent and turned over very quickly."
And, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to also add that the intersection of what is Tom Hallibur and State Road 240, and kind of the Medio, I know it was left out of the design work when we started the Camino de Medio project, but that whole intersection there is very dangerous, and as we improve Camino de Medio, more and more people are going to start using that interception. The same thing with the rest of 240, from the Rancho's post office all the way to Blueberry Hill. If we ever make those improvements to Blueberry Hill Road, it's going to be very necessary to look at working with the state on State Road 240. It's very dangerous, and a lot more people are using it than not.
Mr. Chairman, also, when there is legislation regarding opioid bills, Medicare, it would be good to, for us to be informed, so we did want to testify, because ultimately, we would see benefit from any proposed legislation. And I do not know what's happened with the union, hospital union, and they're drafting legislation to get more money for the hospitals. I don't know where it's at, if they've done it, but some of this legislation that you mentioned that would affect us, I think it's important that we have the chance to go and testify.
And there's also the part of House Bill 2 that we finally get money to where we could get reimbursed for our state prisoners, which...
That's right. All those things, yeah.
Ms. Quintana, have a hand.
I just, a couple of things. I'm going to work closely with Lori, with your legislative staff, where daily, we can put out a schedule of what is being heard that may be directly related to Taos County, and I will try to flag those pieces of legislation and where they're going to be heard, so that all of you have an idea, if you have an interest in sitting through some of those discussions. But the way I work is I try to go through the bills every single day and flag those that may be of interest to the county and have... So, we'll get that, and I'll work with the team.
Another question, and Vice Chair, Gareos, you're right, and we talked about this. If we're going to do any kind of road infrastructure, it's good that we identify those shovel-ready projects already, because my experience with capital out of these issues, they're more than likely, more amenable to funding those shovel-ready projects than if we're just sort of sitting around, trying to figure out what we want. And the sooner we can have that together in the vote, because I don't like working on this halfway through. I like getting this upfront if we can. And regarding the veteran cemetery, is that funding, it's going to go to Veterans Administration? Is that, I mean, I just want to be clear on that, just...
That's the hope, is that if we can get this bill money into House Bill 2, it would go to the Veteran Affairs Department, and they would have the money to continue to improve it. It may mean at some point us making a decision as to whether we would be handing over the property to the state, but that will mean long-term viability of the project and maintenance of it. So, that's our goal, is to work with them, really get them to appreciate the work that Taos County has done already to this point, the design, the things that we've done to get us well ahead of so many other potential projects around the state.
And may I add to that, because if this ultimately had been ended being part of, you know, the whole veterans cemetery and monuments statewide, it would probably strategically for us, be to our advantage to say that it would be, you know, a statewide use issue, just like the courthouse, where I would be able to garner support from both sides of the island around the state if this were to be what we might be looking at long-term, because it makes it a lot more appealing to everybody than just a small... I mean, that's just something...
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I don't know if it's too much work, but that we each have talking points that are given to us, and we're all kind of giving everyone the same message, supporting why we need these projects, same with any opioid legislation, whatever, getting some numbers on current overdose deaths here, and problems that we're facing with not having wraparound services. So, I guess, you know what I'm attempting to say, is that we have just sketches of talking points. If we do go, that we're all on the same page, and we're testifying and just adding to the testimony.
Definitely. I'm sure about our, actually saw it in House Hall over there, the request that, and they have five points with a very brief bullet on each one, and I think that's valuable. And some of it's a one-pager. Each of you can have that one-pager with a brief description of each of our priorities, and I think that's what we'll go ahead and prepare between now and the next meeting. But also, like I said, another resolution form, which I think is pretty valuable. It does show the support of the full body.
And I think that justification is really important to me. My needs.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, that's a great idea. In the past, I've always made sure that, for instance, for the border regions in New Mexico State, we all had a statement where we were all talking and saying the same thing about our priority projects. It was brought to my attention by Representative Gonzalez, that he really would like everybody to be on the same page and have a designated person who's going to be the voice. I'm in Santa Fe every day. I don't come and go. I literally am there, tracking everything every day. But he did, on several occasions, say, you know, if we could just have a voice that is, everybody's on the same page, and not have all these different entities from within the county and departments coming to him, because like I said, it confuses them, and then they don't really know what are true priorities. That's just the message he gave to me, that I'm giving, passing on to you as commissioners, but we've already talked about it, and I think we're all on the same page.
That's what we have to reach for, one or two years from now. Okay. Item B has to do with if it's the first part of the movie, the bridge, or the second part of the movie.
Second part. So, I would like to request of the board an opportunity to shut down the county early on December 20th at noon. We are going to be honoring our state championship football team over at the plaza at 1:00.
That's the 21st.
21st, I apologize. So, 21st, as you know, I'm very frugal, and that's where the bridge comes in. I don't offer a lot of admin time to our staff. I try and save it up for the holiday, and I think we have been very frugal with admin time, and I would like to request the ability to close the county Saturday and Friday. I also would like to see if we could close on the 20th for an hour and a half for lunch, to be able to have a holiday lunch with our staff. Of course, the commissioners are welcome as well. We'll be here in the chambers from 11:30 to 1:00. It's 12 to 1:30. 12 to 1:30, I apologize. So, just a little festive holiday cheer at the end of the year. I am not exactly the most, I'm not the most Santa, I never have been. I do try to honor our employees, because they deserve to be honored, and I think this is the time for us to be able to do that, so I certainly appreciate support in those two closures. I also want to remind the town or the commission that we have Taos Beach House on December 20th in the morning, and so, our lunch would be after Taos Beach House, so it should work out well, where we can still participate that morning and then come in and have a dinner.
The 3:00 is at 9:00 on Thursday.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the 1:00 PM on Friday, where is that going to be?
Plaza.
The Plaza.
Plaza.
Oh, a lease up from the high school to the Plaza Parade?
Yeah.
So, there's actually a parade?
It's an escort. Called an escort, it's not a parade.
Get a lawn chair, go to that around the corner, cheering them on as they go past Commissioner O'Donnell.
Dressed in orange.
And then, anybody can walk in the parade?
It's not a parade, it's an escort. So, they're just going to drive home, like, plomping to the plaza.
Oh, okay.
That way into the factor, noon versus 1:00, because it will be staged here outright, as most of those things are, and in order for our staff to be able to get out of here and get over to the plaza, noon would make more sense than 1:00, so.
I totally agree that we need to do these closures.
Thank you. So, I appreciate that, and if you go ahead and do that, we'll start advertising for that immediately, and then our staff and the public, you know, will be closing our doors on Friday at noon.
And then, do, I mean, I would like to 10:00 to 1:00 PM, do we need to do a quorum, if anyone else is going to be on the Plaza?
There you go.
You already did, okay.
I would like to go ahead and just do a notice report for Taos Beach House, just in case. Oh, we already did that. There's also an event at the airport that same morning, really an inaugural flight that Taos Beach Valley has arranged, so if you intend to be there, that's also about 9:00 AM, I think, the same time as Taos Beach House, that's on at the airport. I wanted to remind the commission of a few dates. January 4th is our swearing-in. It's a Friday, 3:00. We'll be doing our swearing-in here in the chambers, so please come and support our new or re-elected commissioners and elected officials. We will be having our meetings for January scheduled, January 8th and 22nd, due to the holiday falling on the first Tuesday, so we pushed those back to 8th and 22nd. And just a reminder that our retreat is scheduled for the 10th and 11th of January, so... That is all I have today.
Are we also closing?
Yes, we will be closed on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, as well as Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And on that note too, I just want to inform the board that I am still working with the union to make sure that our shift employees, public safety employees, will be compensated for their time accordingly on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, as those are indicated as non-holiday closures, and according to the collective bargaining agreement, they are not entitled to money, but we all agree that they should be compensated, so we're working on finalizing that agreement.
I will raise all the heck if they are not.
Yes, no, we intend to go ahead and take care of that. It is, one reason we did not have the calendar out here for adoption today, to go along with the meetings act, is we do need to work out the details on the calendar next year, so that we don't have to continue to address this after the fact. We want to address it in the calendar for the year, so that's another goal of our meeting, which is this afternoon evening. Any questions to the commission?
I guess I do. 20th and 21st is a closure. About the public safety, we can't.
What I'd like to do is lunch, Sheriff. You need to listen to the whole conversation.
No.
Your deputies, they're in here for, I saw them here for Becky's thing, so I think it's the same thing.
And, yes, so you guys are definitely invited to the lunch, that's just a midday closure, just so that we can all enjoy lunch together. What I'd like to do for the four hours of admin time on Friday is extend that to all shift employees, public safety, to be used as comp time. Essentially, we'll be giving you comp time for that, so that it can be used at a Monday time. So, we'd like our staff to just vary, it's created, when admin gets time off and public safety doesn't.
That's kind of works, I think, that.
Yeah, but they do need to be working, scheduled, working the day off. If they were already off, if it was a normally scheduled day off, they will be getting their comp.
Now, they'd be able to.
That sounds good, it is lunch.
Okay. Anything else? Item 14. Commissioners reporting matters.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell. Mr. Chairman, I just kind of wanted an update on the old guard armory tower. Have you communicated at all with Gonzalez's family in Santa Fe? Mr. Rado. So, there has been attempts at communication. I was contacted by the attorney, and we have been playing a horrible match of telephone tags, so I'm going to reach out and see if we can schedule a lunch. So, we've not moved it along, but they, they are aware that anyone resolves the matter, and we just, the attorney, I don't even get time. Okay. They'll report back as soon as I have something. Okay. And the other thought, Mr. Chairman, manager, is the, you know, we had the hearing on the Dog Store in Rancho's last week. I've been wanting for some time, I've had some communication with Representative Gonzalez I've been wanting for some time, I've had some communication with Representative Gonzalez for a few years now with regards to the idea of creating a historic district within, say, for example, a half-mile radius of the St. Francis Church. I know Commissioner Blakenorman suggested that one time. It's something that we could possibly do on our own to kind of protect that area from this type of development. And so I would like to put that on the table, commissioners, Mr. Chairman, for discussion and eventual passing approval by this commission to create a historic district around in the radius of the St. Francis Church Plaza.
Commissioner Blakenorman.
Thanks. Yeah, so, you know, we changed the LUR recently, and now it is suited for us to do those kinds of overlays. And really, it's just a matter of having the staff time to create them. Kind of related to that, I've been thinking since that hearing that we might want to consider a legislative or ordinance, not state legislation, local ordinance, that it would actually limit the total number of those types of retail operations in Taos County. I'm not sure if there is support for that on the board, but I think it's a good discussion. It's been done in other communities. I think we have three operating now, there's one, I think, in the hopper for El Prado. Of course, there's the one that we denied that may be appealed. I don't know, from the blinking light to ranchos? Does the community need more than five of those? It's an interesting question. Basically, like Commissioner Romero, I'm interested in further discussion.
And, Mr. Chairman, I know we're right in the middle of the holiday season now, Christmas, New Years, but it would be really great if we could get some sort of an idea as to a timeline for these two ideas that have been discussed today from our planning department and from our county manager.
Who do we talk to, Nathan Edward?
I'll reach out to Edward and see who he would recommend having staff to get to a site next to.
Randy, do you have experience with that?
I do, and one of the things that I think post-passage of the LUR is that there needs this spring almost to be a work study on what, how we proceed with land use regs on specific areas and for specific uses. Because the, both issues that we had in our special meeting last week were extremely difficult and controversial, and there are legislative fixes to both of those things. And they involve economic development, they involve preservation of current imported resources in the community. And so I would recommend that we do that. And it might even be in the next budget year, hiring a planner to give us some guidance on what would be available to us, you know, in a planning organization, do an RMP for that with an amount of money, just to say, hey, how can we, how can we make some sense of this? Because piecemeal, like we did a week ago, is really hard as we found out.
Mr. Chairman, question, I'd ask if the town in Taos has an ordinance or any surrounding communities, we look at those ordinances and try to build that up. Again, my experience as a county, as a city councilor, we proposed and put in place an ordinance for historic preservation so we could save our church. We left it very vague, and now we are battling with the Chevron Giant in the county, and they want to leave Tadings Pike that has been there since the 1960s that now they feel is an historical landmark.
They want to clean it.
So.
That doesn't save them money on the lot, does it?
No, I don't know what it's doing, but it's a conversation that we're having. So as we pick and choose where we're going to put these historic districts, it's really to a true inventory of what we feel makes that historical landmark of value, and it doesn't impede us from demoing or doing any kind of reman or anything that could possibly become a nice sort of hood. We left that very vague, now we're having that fight with Chevron about should we left there, not be left there. So is this use of those practices that are on the surrounding communities, what they've done and what their experience with it, to develop this?
Mr. Chairman, that's a great idea. I know, for example, like in ranchos around the St. Francis Church, there are some empty lots immediately around the parking area in the St. Francis Church. And there's been conversations in the past, you know, people need affordable housing. So, yeah, let's move in our 1986 mobile home right next to the church. Luckily, there have been a couple of mobile homes that have been moved out, but there remains those empty lots. And with that also, there are properties around the St. Francis Church that are hundreds of years old, and they're falling apart. It would be great to get the owners to do some sort of repair to those buildings without causing much of an economic duress to those landlords. But those properties also pose a health threat to the neighborhoods, knowing that homeless people go in there, they live in there in the wintertime. So there's a lot of angles that we can address this with.
Mr. Chairman, I think that has to do with the local ordinance that Mr. Rado is working on. I'd like to add regarding the historic overlays, that I've been working with a group who'd like to restore the old school in Moscow, it is a historic building. So I would also like to include, when we're talking about overlays, that that area be included to stop any possible action of demolishing that old school building.
Is it historic, is our manager an old schooler?
How do you know it's cool?
Hey, okay, all right, good. Thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add another area, another commissioner, David was brought this up, I'll shut up. But the area of the corridor leading to the gorge bridge is another area in Taos that is ripe for development because of the airport, and we know this is going on, Mr. Chairman. So eventually, it's an area that we also need to look at protecting.
We do have an overlay to that area right now in place, but certainly will require a non-book. Mostly, it's kind of open, you know, it's like if we're going to have industrial uses, that's a good place, and we need to have some places where industrial uses. So I feel pretty comfortable about that corridor, but it is going to require some amendments to make it fit better with our LUR structure. Yeah, and I love the work study suggestions, we can really get at some of this stuff.
And, Mr. Chairman, we all heard the report from Picky Bauer about the lack of water in the Nono Kimato area, and we may want to think about not allowing any major developments. They seek the wells and their bag, you can't get a good source of water because of the geological structures out there. So that might be something, you know, not to discourage development, but if a developer thinks they can come in in that area and drill a well and they can't get sufficient water, like we saw, town in Taos drilled a well, they have to cap it up in that area because the pictures of they didn't know what is coming up. So those are things we do, I think, need to look at.
Also, Commissioner, Vice Sheriff Vegas, that Chevron, you brought with Chevron, I meant to talk about this here, the point of destination piece of the GRT reform means all of their stuff, everything will be filed in your community and in Taos County, no other, their choice, so that's something that is on the N C radar as well. Okay, so I see discussion of the Taos County Cooperative Weed Management Area Agreement. Commissioner Don.
Uh, yes, I've attended several meetings, I believe Mr. Frost attended one. This is to get a handle on our weed problem. It also allows the weed management area to go after grants and funding sources. So this is an effort, as you can see, between many entities. I would request we bring this back and sign on this agreement.
Does it ban any substances?
No, because it's, we're going by USDA, it's mainly for the noxious weed management. And as you know, USDA has a list of what are noxious weeds. And we've got everybody that's attended these meetings, you know, the Forest Service, the BLM, and all the different groups to see how we can stop or, I don't know if you can ever eliminate the spread, but to control the spread because of these noxious weeds, because they do impact economic development with crop losses, they infringe upon habitat of wildlife. So if you, you know, have any questions or if our attorney sees any issues with this boilerplate agreement, you know, do.
What is an M O A, I mean, a J P A?
It's an M O U. Yes, just.
Um, I, Mr. Cordell, just wanted to verify that, because a J P A is a whole different process. Now, it was presented by Councilor Han was a J P A, and that's totally inappropriate, but I'm not saying the wrong.
Right, and we have been getting.
So an M O U or an O A or something like that is more, than more presented to staff earlier.
Getting guidance from the USDA guy in charge of weed control. And I think the only thing we would need to decide is who the representative is, do you want staff? Do you, does the commission want to appoint someone from the commission to go to these meetings?
I was the appointee two years ago, and I'm trying to ban substances, which is against federal law. I'm valid, I'm trying to take something over.
Now, when you can see, we've got Rio Grande Ace Hardware listed as a.
Ace on the ground, that's what we were trying to do with the deal, it was good, yeah.
So I think just the only thing would be for our county manager to recommend who will attend those meetings, there was one going on right now, but.
Probably also have maybe representative of facilities or property manager, and a point like that. Couldn't be actually using those. Now, we're not telling them what they got to use, they don't, they did basically speak up in favor or against them. We listen to their condition. So we're not having to be two guys to warn.
Manny knows more about weed control than any of us all.
Good. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting this around the presentation anymore, but I will bring this up in the next couple of meetings. We do have an EPA elected officials workshop on January 25th. There is an open house on the 24th for all concerned citizens throughout the county. I think that this passed over the course of this summer and spring and fall. There was Hades lines that were asbestos wrapped, that we found all throughout the county. I'd like for it to be passed on to all county residents that they participate in these meetings in the future. So I'll keep it up, keep you guys informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15. Taos County Board of Commissioners meeting in closed session to discuss, consider the county manager. This matter may be discussed in closed session under the Meeting Act exemption 10-15-18, which laws for discussion of limited personnel matters. Lieutenant of the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I did want to announce that we need to do the TCA DC inspections. I would like to bring a report back January 22nd. So just a reminder to get your reports, to get your inspections done. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, no, it's just follow the agenda. Go ahead, thank you.
So, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second to go in closed session under the exemption of 10-15-18 to Mr. Commissioner. Clear color roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Vegas?
Yes.
Sheriff Tamra?
Yes.
Motion to come back into open session.
Second.
Clear color roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Vegas?
Yes.
Sheriff Tamra?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Rado, I believe during executive session, under the exemption that we went into, executive session, only matters were allowed under the discussion of personnel, limited personnel matters were discussed. I ask that the commission accept my report as presented. Motion goes up.
Second.
Clear color roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Vegas?
Yes.
Sheriff Tamra?
Yes.
Item 16 is close to the turn.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, what? What's the, who's going and how many are going to the conference in Santa Fe? And who's everybody else up for the close upstairs too?
I gotta check and make sure, because I'm trying to get in the jury and it's below.
Commissioners, we have a small doctor rooms at the Hotel Santa Fe at legislative rate, so if you guys don't find a room that we know of, there should be rooms at the Hotel Santa Fe.
Okay.
Check my schedule.
And I'm going Monday night with this lady, Walter, combining that work company. Motion to adjourn, motion. Second, all of you, are you? Both same time, thank you, Valerie, thank you for participating.